Nineteenth, seven P M. So please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, could you take the roll call, please?
Sure.
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Mayor Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
D P W director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Planning and zoning director.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizens comments on agenda-related items. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on agenda-related items only. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to the approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, payroll, invoices, and notification regarding next work session. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Ready for roll call?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration of entering into a professional services agreement with Fishback to provide third-party administration and oversight of the Eagle grant and loan received by the city for the Gateway site. The city received a $700,000 grant and an $800,000 loan for demolition and remediation of the Gateway project site. The grant/loan program anticipates and requires third-party administration and oversight. The city does not have this expertise and needs to engage an environmental consulting firm to provide these services. At this time, council could take action to enter into professional service agreement with Fishback to provide third-party administration and oversight of the Eagle fund and loan received by the city for the Gateway site and further authorize the mayor to sign the contract. Do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I have, um, what is the cost associated?
So when we come into the grant and loan program, Eagle kind of determines what reasonable numbers of costs were made through the budget. So the grant law administration is 32,000, the third-party oversight is 60,700. There's $500 for a sign, and then the city is going to get about $4,500 in higher administrative costs back. And those are all covered by the grant law and pre-approved by Eagle.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, could you please take roll?
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of the sale of city-owned parcel lot number two Monroe Street. The city has received two offers for lot two Monroe Street, which has been listed for sale since March 2018. One of them has been withdrawn, so we have just one left. Remax Bayshore offer $90,000 mortgage to close by 11:15:21. At this time, council could take action to accept the offer and authorize the sale of lot number two Monroe Street.
Mayor, could I ask you one thing?
Sure.
Maybe adding to that action item that you would approve, authorize, and direct the city clerk and mayor to execute the purchase agreement and all related closing documents? Think that that should be something in the motion as well.
Oh, okay.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
That we include the authority for the city to be able to close on that property.
Will that satisfy you, Mr. Seeler?
The language, I think we have, so.
This is zoning on that lot.
Just need a second.
I'll second. Zoning, I believe it's residential. And as, so I think just some background, it's been, I think we received a lot of offers. You know, as mentioned, it was on, for sale since 2018. See a lot of offers, 65,000 to 75,000 over the years. The lot, just to the, just to the west, sold for 107,000, but I think at that time it was unknown. I think the purchaser did not realize they have to connect water and sewer from St. Mary's Parkway. So I think that's kind of partly why it sat so long. We did receive, you know, one offer for 81, then we received a second offer, highest and best, it came to this 90,000 offer with a mortgage. So, and as the mayor mentioned, the cash offer withdrew, so that's why we were left with this 90,000 offer. And the purchaser is aware of the need to spend the money to hook up water and sewer.
Thank you.
Where does the proceeds go from that sale?
Local streets. They go to our street fund.
Okay.
We made an authorization to do that years ago.
Okay.
Are any more questions on the sale of the lot? Heather, could you please?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac. Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Consideration of a parcel split at 480 River Street. The city of Manistee would like to split their parcel at 480 River Street, 5151-349-70206, so they can sell a portion to Ted Ficano's business. The parcels meet zoning requirements, and the city assessor has confirmed that the split is legal and allowable. The city of Manistee Planning Commission gave their recommendation to city council for the parcel split to request, uh, parcel split request to continue. At this time, council could take action to approve the parcel split at 480 River Street.
I'll make a motion.
Senator, a second?
Seconding.
Discussion?
I just have a quick question. He's, they're gonna bring a new updated purchase agreement, right? I believe so, and I think we're still in the process of talking with the D N R about if that land replacement is, is gonna be approved. But I think for that purchase price, if we're gonna lower it, we're gonna need a new purchase agreement. Because the one we have is expired. So we'll definitely have to bring another one forward.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hearing none, could you take roll call again?
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Consideration of proposed zoning ordinance amendment Z 21-18. The planning commission has approved for recommendation an X amendment to define lot coverage as that portion of a lot that is covered with buildings, structures, patios, and anything paved, excluding driveways, expressed as a ratio of the horizontal area measured from the exterior surface of the, of the exterior walls of the ground floor of all principal and accessory buildings on a lot to the total area. An ordinance, as an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, council could adopt it at the next regular meeting. At this time, council could take actions to introduce zoning ordinance amendment Z 21-18.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Discussion?
I think this, it just really just kind of cleans up the ordinance for it, so it's, it's easier to adhere to and easier for people to understand.
Anybody else? Heather, would you please take the roll call?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Notices, communications, and announcements. A report from the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts. A regular part of each council meeting is a, is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. At this time, Mr. Xavier Verna will report on the activities of the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts and respond to any questions the council may have regarding their activities. No action is required on this item.
Hello.
Hello. We like having you here. It's nice.
Oh, it's all the way up the bar.
There we go. Hold on, let me.
Thank you. All right. Um, well, good evening. There's been some time here since the last time we did this with new council members. Congratulations on your appointment. And, well, and so there'll be some refreshers and some new stuff to talk about, so I'm just gonna dive right in. And I'm Xavier. I'm the executive director with Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts. The RRCA is a visual and performing arts organization that preserves the historic Ramsdale Theater. For those of you who may not be aware, this organization was actually established in the 90s when they were going through restoration efforts and working in conjunction with the Manistee civic players. So we are doing business as the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts director, but we're continuing the great work that they had started back in the 90s. And our mission and vision are relatively the same, but the goal for this board, when it formed in 2016, was to revitalize the building and to provide diverse programming accessible to the community and to our visitors. And we have done just that. We also have a diversity, inclusion, and equality statement by nature of our business. We are inclusive in every sense of the word, but we have this statement and all the information relative to the organization, its financial audits, all available on our website. The organizational structure is comprised of board of directors. We have 10 members. Our administrative staff, we have three full-time members and one part-time member. And we have volunteers who help us out during live concerts and other private functions, servicing the bar, acting as a producer. There's all levels of commitment. If you're at all interested or know anybody who's wanting to get more involved in the community and really loves the arts, happen to contact me or contact Teresa. She's our new visual arts volunteer coordinator. She's wonderful. Generally, our building usage is described here. We have live events that take place in the theater, that feature touring acts, that feature our local talent. We have visual art exhibits. We have tours that are ongoing, and we also set some, some schedules during busier times like the summer or during slay the weekend. So there's some numbers in there to kind of talk about, you know, the frequency of those events. Some of these, like the exhibits, you know, there might be one exhibit, but it'll last six weeks, you know, so people can visit throughout that entire time. And we try to have it, we have events too, so that those going to a concert get to enjoy some art as well prior to or during intermission. So we're proud of everything we've been doing. We're part of our community. We have the civic players and conservatory dance that also participate in, in the building as well. It's been some time since the civic players have been there, pandemic-related, but they're planning on making a big comeback in the spring of 2022, so we're excited to have them back. And Ingrid, as you know, she has a private studio at the Ramsdale, but she's also the one that directs the Nutcracker every other year. This is a Nutcracker year, so I hope that you can be a part of that. It's a really awesome family event. And I think, again, a testament to the local talent that we have here. We've also opened the doors to, to other functions, to groups that are in need. There's oftentimes, you know, some financial restrictions, people they need a place to meet, and we can provide them a space like that, you know. We'll collaborate in some way, provide them some space to meet. And we've also held functions like the picture you see here where we might have a live concert scheduled, but we'll have a student show programmed for that morning, the same day that the concert's happening. And, you know, we'll work with the Manistee ISD coordinator, and they'll coordinate all the buses. And it's a free program for the students. They're just responsible for bringing the kids. So that picture was pre-pandemic, obviously. You see no masks there, all smiles. And of course, you know, that's sort of what we're working our way back toward. So 2020 was an incredibly tough year for everybody. This is just a very quick snapshot. In no way represents the struggles that we all went through on a daily basis, but, you know, obviously, March through July, we were shut down. Normally, we don't, we're not as busy even January through March, so, you know, really, when you look at it, it's the first half of that year, there was not a lot of money being generated. But luckily, we were able to reopen midway through the year. We had, we had a lot of art exhibits. We were very proud of that. We also had just started to launch online sales of art, which we, we didn't have that infrastructure in place before, but of course, everything, you know, kind of forced us to transform our business model a little bit. So that was nice to have art available online and to also be able to showcase it in the gallery. We had a few other highlights here. Manistee's first ever drive-in concert. That was pretty cool. I have some pictures to show you here in a minute. And we also held a concert that was featuring the Boston Brass, and it was held, so to speak, like on a national stage. We had over 20 different presenting organizations that were streaming the event happening at the Ramsdale live. And so, you know, all those audiences across the nation that, you know, were kind of watching the show happen in Manistee, I thought that that was pretty cool, to, to have something like that happen. And that was also the first live concert that we had that year since February. So it just felt good to kind of be back in the theater. Jeff Daniels, he was supposed to show up, do a live show that year. Of course, he couldn't, he couldn't make it out, and now he's back on tour acting. And, you know, I don't know when he's gonna be back, but we love when he decides to do a tour. He always puts Manistee on one of his tour stops, so we'll just see him again soon. Then we had to shut down again, but, you know, we were still able to do some things. You know, we had adapted a little bit. You know, this picture is a sculpture that we worked with a couple artists from a couple, a couple of hours away south of us. They were designing this 11-foot-tall sculpture, and they had designed bikes around it called the Lamp Lighter. And when you hop on the bike, pedal it, and it lights the lamp, and some of you got to see that, maybe hop on the bike too. It's good exercise. But it was just providing people an opportunity to, to come together during a time where we had to really distance ourselves. It was outdoors and in front of the Christmas tree. It was really great working with Jeff to kind of make all that happen for the community. We normally have, you know, a thousand, thousands of people, and we just didn't have that, but still, there was a great people. And I thought that was pretty special. Few pictures here from the drive-in concert. Of course, those supporters on top. Violent Johnson really came through and helped us big time here to make all this happen because we had to build a stage, and we had to get lights, and we had to get sound. All the amenities that are normally available to us, we had to actually build on an empty parking lot. And that was, that's the golden Kmart spot just up the street from us. But hey, you see a lot of smiles there, and people having a good time. Beautiful day, great music. That was really fun. This is a picture of the Boston Brass stage, and this is a partnership with the West Door Community College. We work really well with West Door Community College. We do two to three collaborations each year. Some of you may have attended the Surface Free show that just happened a few weeks ago. That was incredible. So we have a couple other shows we're doing together with them later this year and into the season next year. But this was, this was a pretty amazing event, too, to have. So this happened early in 2021, once again, kind of during a time where we still couldn't have live events yet. But by the time we were finished with this, we were, we were able to feature a 400 mask in our gallery. And this was a partnership with Mission Legacy Art Park. We had, you know, five different states engaged in this. You know, anybody who wanted a paper mashing mask, just send them the mask. They painted whatever they wanted to paint on it. It was just what we call artistic healing, you know, just an opportunity to kind of put, express in your own way what you've been going through, how the state of the world has impacted you. If you want to watch any of the videos, they're available on that website, ramsdaletheater.org/basemask. I recorded all, the whole entire room, and you'll see Jamie Jones' mask in there, Tony Trucks. She even got her production team, that SEAL team, all the makeup artists, to do masks as well, so they did a pretty good job. So this is just a, you know, representation of what many people were struggling with at the time, which is not entirely news to you because you've heard all of these stories, but these people were sharing stories with us, and, you know, they were participating in this group, this group activity, and giving us the opportunity to let others kind of experience that together. And this particular person had not seen their grandson yet, and seen her son, and his wife and kid were supposed to move back to Michigan. But, you know, a lot of people had travel restrictions, so there was, you know, a lot of, uh, people were really struggling with connectivity, so this was just a nice way to kind of bring us together emotionally and artistically. So, you know, and once again, and we've said this many times, you know, this work that we do and the impact that we made is not possible without the contributions of the owners, the grant holders, the city contributors, the business sponsors, everybody who's involved. I think we really came together, especially through trying times, and, and invested in the organization continuing the great work that we do, so we really appreciate all of that. I think that is really, for me especially, as, as a leader, you know, kind of helped me keep my head up and say, okay, keep going. People just came through with support, and so it does mean a lot and obviously makes a big difference. You see all the different programs that we have. So this predates the pandemic, but I thought because there's some new people, that it'd be good to build some contacts before we start, you know, collecting new data. We did a economic impact survey. We asked a few questions of our audience to learn a little bit about what that economic impact actually looks like whenever we have a concert, for example. So one question we asked is, how far do you drive? It's no surprise that almost three-quarters are, you know, within a thirty mile radius, radius of where we are. And, you know, age range, you know, a lot of people consider Manistee and the area as, as a aging community, so, you know, 50-plus, it's no surprise there either, but good to have these numbers. Obviously, this has, you know, changed since 2019. This is a great question. I think very telling of the impact. When we have a concert, did you visit a restaurant? Well, obviously, you know, dinner and a show, and then a show, and then a, you know, nightcap, right? But I think, you know, even though we don't have events every night, when the events happen, it's a surge, you know, for those restaurants. And some, some of these times, you know, they're in the middle of the week, in the middle of the dead winter. So I think it's, you know, important to recognize that this is important to kind of help the economy, the local economy here. I went backwards. Was this your first time visiting the Ramsdale? I have to tell you, I ask this question every time I do a curb speech, and I, it's more than 18%. I get a lot of hands, people who come up, it's their first time visiting the Ramsdale. Maybe not the first time coming to Manistee, but seeing the Ramsdale and sort of being connected in that way and thinking, oh, I might go back, which means, you know, I might drive through, buy some gas, maybe stay overnight. Lindsay over at Ramsdale Inn tells me often, you know, people are always booking hotels when they're coming for a show here. Shows are Friday night, they stay over, you know, they do something else on Saturday. So just for some context, this is slightly dated, but, you know, we will do this again, and hopefully by next year, I'll have some, some new info for you. We, by the time we got to the summer of this year, we started with a theater camp. That was the first one that we ever produced. We had 14 kids. We had short days, two weeks long, but super impactful. These kids were super talented. Our local community does not currently offer professional theater camp offering. You have to go in Blue Lake or Inlock or something like that. For this age group, also, this was middle school through high school. So it's sort of, you know, filling in the gap for what's available in our area. And so we hope to do something like this again next year and have more hours that we can spend, and not just focus on their acting, but, you know, some kids might want to get involved in the tech side of things. You know, people who are more stage management. There's a big industry for production work and, you know, very sustainable jobs out there and that sort of thing. Visual arts, once again, you know, really keeping that strong throughout the summer. We had the Art Divas. They were supposed to do their live show in December of 2025, but we shut down. So that was online, and then they came back and then did a live show. Then after that, Ken Cooper had his 50-year retrospective. That was pretty amazing. It was a ton of work, pretty much spans the entire life that he's been doing art. That was, that was an incredible show. Performing arts series. We had some really fun tribute concerts over the summer, featuring a local conservatory dance as well. And we had a classical concert and, you know, Cirque du Style. So I think that's just representative of the diverse offerings that happen on stage. It was a little bit for everybody at the Ramsdale. Getting into the finances here, this is a five-year span here. Fiscal year 22 is obviously projected. We're on a July 1 to June 30, so, but what this tells you at least is, you know, our revenue and our expenses are neck and neck, you know. We're not really building a surplus at the end of the year. We're spending all the money that's being donated and putting into the program and trying to do more impact, increase the impact. The city contribution was actually even higher than, than what it was in fiscal year 2018. So I think the understanding was, you know, we were gonna work together on trying to lower that and maintain that at a reasonable level. So we, we've obviously been able to do that without asking to increase that. And obviously, that money is going toward maintenance in the building. It's not paying salaries or any of the programs directly. It's essentially, you know, helping us cover the cost of maintaining the 46,000 sort of structure. We've also taken the opportunity not just to invest in programming, but in the building as well. And so we're increasing the value of the historic theater. The investments into the theater over the time that we've been active has been, you know, well over 180,000. Some of those include the piano, the LED sign on the wall, on the exterior wall. The gallery, that if you knew the gallery before what it is now, it's completely transformed. The doors, which are gonna get repaired soon. The sound system alone was 100,000, close to that. Used soundboard, used speakers, wires, I mean, all that stuff was, we're 20 years old and giving us a lot of problems. giving us a lot of problems. And we just, you know, we couldn't service the local groups or any of the artists touring with the best quality equipment that's out there. So there's, these investments are necessary so that we get to that point where things are a little more self-sustaining. And this also describes a little bit of our revenue, but a different look. What we're representing here is just a diverse group of revenue that we collect. I would say fiscal year nineteen is more of a normal year, right? Because that's pre-pandemic. In fiscal year twenty and fiscal year twenty-one, we were getting relief grants. You know, we were getting the PPP loan. Small Business Administration had a grant for venues. Arts Midwest, another arts funding organization, they were providing relief grants. These are one-time in nature, we're not going to see them again. So we expect that it will go back to kind of normal fiscal year nineteen. But we're happy that we were able to maintain the sponsorship and individual contribution over the, over the three years. And we hope that that continues to grow with, with more, with more of the impact that we're making. Future plans. We, through, you know, cooperation with the city, announced a request for proposals and qualifications for, you know, to review the master plan and update it for, for the theater, for the whole building, really. And the plan is to look at structural integrity, you know, opportunities for, for changes, anything that's going to increase the access, make the building, you know, more accessible for people, but more functional for the things that we're doing now and kind of looking toward the future, what other opportunities we might have. This is a necessary step. We're not the experts, so, you know, we really have to get the experts to add the floor to help us. So this was an important part of the process. We, the city got the grant from, say, the Reserve Preservation Office to essentially cover the costs of the study. You know, and any difference there, the Ramsdale will cover that cost. There's no cost to the city here. Pre-bid meetings will be starting soon, and hopefully, you know, we'll have an architect pick one at the end of the year. But, you know, our goal to do with that, what we want to do with that master plan is start the campaign. And so kind of the idea we have now is, you know, this building turns one hundred and twenty in twenty twenty-three. And so it might make some sense to start the campaign then and kind of give it a five-year span and celebrate the hundred and twenty-fifth, you know, with, I don't know, maybe raise all the money by then or maybe all the work out there. But we really just don't know what the scope of work is yet or how much we have to raise. But that's just kind of future, future thinking there. But very exciting for the community. I think it's also important to consider, we have two new hotels coming in. We have to remain competitive, and so we have to, you know, make some necessary changes, especially the ballroom, right? Make the catering kitchen more accessible, polish up the ballroom, really to help sell it for other potential wedding clients and, uh, future business opportunities so that we can be competitive in our community. I think it's exciting that we have hotels and all that, and that will help us. But it's also keeping us on our toes. So we have some exciting events coming up. As I said, this is a Nutcracker year, it's probably the biggest event of the year. Please come to that. There's a lot of local kids that are a part of that, but there's cooperating studios around the region that Ingrid reaches out to and gets those kids involved. And so this is, you know, goes across county. The other events that feature more tribute shows, we have the Met Opera, which is broadcasted live from New York. We have workshops for kids, it's the Family Opera Days. We have the Conservatory Dance as a show coming up. And a really interesting exhibit coming up in November, First Americans. It's going to feature Native American artists. They're going to be showcasing work, works that are, you know, any medium. It could be arts and crafts, it could be paintings, it could be fabric. But it's going to feature Native American artists. They're all running through the central section for that. It's thirteen, hoping to come out to that or check out the exhibit. And nobody's more excited for the Rush Tribute Project than Mr. Ed Bradford. He's been telling me he's wanted a Rush Tribute show here since I started. So we finally got him, and they're, they're finally going to play it for the Ramsdale. And I have, I think that's my last slide. Materials here for you that I'd like for you to have, and since you familiarize yourself, you know, read it on the screen. And I'd be happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you.
I'm interested in the Boston series, the Boston performance that you had live at the Ramsdale that, that you broadcasted to these different... Was that a good revenues source for you guys? Did you make some money on that, or?
No.
Okay.
No, because we only had fifty people at the theater. And we couldn't have more than fifty people at the theater. So any of the money that came in from the other venues went directly to the artists.
Okay.
The artists didn't charge us a fee.
Okay.
So the deal was, okay, we give you a venue, but we, you know, we can't, we, we won't pay the artist fee, but we'll give you the venue so you can perform. So the other presenting venues were essentially paying their artist fee. And we had to, once again, look at infrastructure. We weren't, at that time, when we had talked about the possibility of having that, we were not set up for live streaming. So we had to make some changes to our network and the speed of all that. And so, I mean, just, there were some extra costs in there. But we were happy to do it because, you know, once again, it was just, there wasn't anything else happening.
Right.
And we thought that, you know, what a cool way to put Manistee up the path.
Yeah. Would, could that be a fun, you know, a source of revenue for you going?
Yeah, I think so. And, and you're seeing a lot more performing arts centers investing in live streaming and putting cameras around their halls. I mean, some of the major orchestras are doing that, had been doing that. But now it's like, people sort of expect it now. They want to be able to sit at home and watch a show. So I think certainly something that we would talk to the architects.
Go ahead.
This is a good report, Xavier. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your work on keeping the place relevant and vibrant and all you do, because I know it's a hard job. But thank you for you.
A lot of out-of-the-box thinking, the drive-in thing and whatever else. You're really properly challenged, too, but you, it's really impressive.
I've come to the last two performances, and the Zoom Brothers were good, and with the other act. And it's too bad more people don't come.
Yeah, it was, it was, I guess, put it as, four hundred people really missed out on that, on that country show. But, yeah, we hope that, you know, so, you know, this upcoming weekend, the audience will look good for the Irish Night Show. And that used to be in the theater, but we changed it to the ballroom to kind of keep it more of a social setting. There'll be ashmar, and you can enjoy live music, and there'll be food, so, yeah.
Are there tickets still available for Friday?
Yes.
And, and you can go online and buy those, correct?
You can, yep. Or you can give us a call or, you know, visit us on the First Street door. We're also able to help you there. The box office typically opens an hour before each event, so you can always expect to, you know, buy tickets at the door. But, you know, be strong with American Matt going online, getting there, not having to rush.
We're looking, Mike, I'm in the Lakeside Club, and we're looking forward to doing the Festival of Trees.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Anybody?
Great job, and, and also, your staff is absolutely amazing. The, how hard they work and, and how dedicated they are to it. It certainly is a team effort, and it shows.
Yeah, we have an awesome staff. And two, two new ones, which I failed to mention, that Teresa and Sherry had just started in August. They're thrilled of their own, um, increasing impact for everybody. Well, thank you for your time, everyone, we really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Concerns and comments. Citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Are there any public comments? Hearing and seeing none. I'll move on to officials and staff. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We're in the process of transitioning to a new building inspector. So in the meantime, we have Kurt Briggs from St. Belt coming up on Mondays and Thursdays as needed for building inspections. And then Matt Schneider is coming up Mondays and Thursdays for mechanical and rental inspections. So the public, if there's any questions or anyone needs an inspection, just call the Safe-Built General Line, two six nine two two three zero five four five. Another update, we were asked to provide a letter of support to extend, from the county planning department, we're asked to, they wanted a letter of support from us to extend their brownfield plan for Jocelyn Cove Development, so east of thirty-one by the Milwaukee Ship. Would, so we provide a letter of support. I think they have a meeting Thursday night, is that correct? So we provide that. This would come back before council as a new development and reimbursement agreement. The city installed a lift station as part of that project that we would be reimbursed for out of this new plan. But just wanted council to be aware. Thank you.
City attorney.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
City clerk.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Oh. Planning administrator, Planning Department administrator. City engineer.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Mr. Bradford, chief financial person. Mr. McCula, nice to see you back from your vacation.
Thank you.
Do you have anything to report?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Okay. Chief class?
I don't have anything, Your Honor, thank you.
Where shall I start? Mr. Pacman.
I just would like to recognize that Dwayne Dewey passed away this week. If you don't know, Dwayne Dewey was a Medal of Honor recipient. He lived in iron, but he had a lot of history in Manistee. He did a golf course with a golf fundraiser for the veterans here. There's a plaque for Mr. Dewey up for the veterans, it's called the Man of Steel. If you don't know, he's a good story. He actually sent out a grenade to protect another Marine and was injured in the process. He received a Medal of Honor from, I think, Eisenhower gave him the Medal of Honor? President Eisenhower gave him?
Yes, Eisenhower, yeah, called him the, yeah, Body of Steel.
I, just a, just a gentleman, a humble guy, and a great guy to hang out in a golf cart with, bigger bear with. So he'll be missed, and he was a, a true hero.
Um, no, I have nothing. Um, I just want to, so there is a lady here in town, Jessica Sharp, that passed away on Sunday. And I think that we should do something for her. She did a lot for this community. She started Stump Out Cancer. So maybe we should make a day for her or do a plaque or something. I didn't personally meet her, but I know a lot of lives were touched by her, so we might want to do something.
Yeah.
Cremation?
Yeah.
Could you send us all her address, send us an email on it or something? So I, I didn't quite hear what she said, you know, with the name and everything.
Uh, it was Jessica Sharp.
Okay. Mr. Gabowski.
Jeff, are they going to start doing the sidewalks and getting them things done? I've been walking them, and I see a lot of up and downs from trees and all that.
Yes, we're, we're trying to clear up some stuff so that we can start doing sidewalk replacements in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, there, thank you.
Also, I saw that they're, they're recreating my little Islands of Refuge on thirty-one so I can cross safely. About how long is that going to be there?
They are scheduled to do work this weekend and the next weekend, hopefully they'll be done after that. They're just doing punchless items, so all the major work is done. This is just cleaning up the nature, everything's done.
Okay, thanks.
Is that it?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Are you sure? I just, um, I just want, you know, everybody to know that it is Halloween. My house is lit up. And I think there's been a little bit more activity in the area for Halloween, and I'm happy to see that. I don't put up the decorations, my husband does. So it's nothing that I've done, but it, it does add a, a lot of fun to the street. So get out there and take a look at the Halloween decorations when you get a chance. That's about it. All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.